Frank, you mentioned 13 websites with different studies. And you said that was the basis that you used to come to the conclusion that turf, in your opinion, is safe. I did go through some of them. Of the 13, three had nothing to do with artificial turf. They were Parks and Rec benchmarking websites. But of the several, and I just picked a few, I looked at the EPA. Now, again, the EPA did not study PFAS. Let's keep in mind, they admitted that limited tests were conducted on their subjects and stated that the report was in no way a risk assessment. And it also had many disclaimers. And Pam, I believe you had mentioned this at a number of meetings also. So we can't really conclude that the EPA is telling the public that turf is safe. What they studied was crumb rubber infill. And they said that there were, they believed there were low levels of chemical exposure during playing on turf with crumb rubber infill only. So not a basis for anything than having to do with heat or PFAS. The CDC has identified artificial turf as a potential source of lead. This was another study that you read. So maybe you didn't read this part, but this is important. While the risk may be considered low from new fields, both aging and weathered turf can release lead dust which can be ingested and inhaled. The CDC suggests that testing of older worn and weathered fields will determine the level of lead, and if they are high, children should be restricted from playing on them. NJDEP talked about the manufacturing process and how all turf had PFAS, talked about heat islands, and recognizes the importance of looking at both of these items in greater detail. They said 100% of detection in total fluorine was found in the studies, and this was a 2023 NJDEP study. A full assessment of optional alternatives should be performed, and endpoints such as toxic releases and carbon footprints should be appropriately compared to evaluate the full impact to environmental and human health. Then I went on to the Journal of Environmental Pollution. And this talks about that skin can burn after certain hours of play on artificial turf. And they did a 51-day measurement. Quite fascinating stuff. They also talked about, you know, other items. There are a whole host of reports. So I don't know if you cherry picked, if you read these, if you're just marketing, you know, smartness and you think, you know, you're just going to tell people that artificial turf is safe. I don't know where you're getting your information, because I went to each of these sites and found very different opposing views from what you talked about. Last but not least is National Geographic talking about microplastics and honeybees, something that you might be interested in. Happy to send that article to you. It talks about, these are miniature environmentalists, and they are collecting microplastics, likely from turf and other materials, on their wings and their legs, maybe killing bees as well. So we might not be a bee city for very long. That's all I have to say right now. I'll have more later after the meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Cynthia.
Hello. My name's Eric Santoli. I'm a Ridgewood resident. And I actually was invited here today by Ms. Jeanne Johnson just to show some support. I'm a teacher and an artist, and I'm pretty in touch with the Ridgewood art community. And I've been a teacher for over 10 years. And I wanted to show support and just some solidarity for the Outside Air Initiative, which is a mural program, public arts program. We were able to talk about it today as I was a guest on the Ridgewood Talks podcast. And basically, I wholeheartedly support this initiative. I think on many levels, it's a public good. And it's not just something for artists. I think this is an initiative that could support the school system and beyond. So I did want to show my support and just come out and say how I feel about it. And I think it's a tremendous positive. So thank you.
Thank you, Eric.
Hello. My name is Jackie Carter. I'm also a Ridgewood resident.
Jackie, could you speak a little more directly into the mic?
Yes. I'm Jackie Carter, and I am also a Ridgewood resident. And I'm here to support the arts in downtown Ridgewood as well. Everything Eric said, I think it will bring more people downtown. It will increase the business. It will get people to go to more restaurants, more stores. It will be a good talking moment, and I'm just here to support that. So thank you very much. I'm excited to see her presentation to you guys.
Thank you so much. By all means. You're just fine.
Hi, I'm Jenny Coats. I am a Ridgewood resident. I'm the treasurer of newcomers. I'm on the Library Foundation Board and the Kasha Van Shell Committee. So very active and excited about Ridgewood. And I'm also here to show my support for the Ridgewood Open Air Art Project that the other two just spoke to. And I'm glad I got here in time to do it. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Anyone else from the audience? Seeing no one, let's go to our hybrid access attendees. Amy, you're up. Amy, run mute. There we go.
Got it. Amy McCambridge, Ridgewood resident. More to more, you name dropped, just like Cynthia said, a lot of sources last week claiming you've done your research and you've looked at the science. We're just going to kind of rip that apart. The EPA and CDC, and again, Cynthia mentioned a lot of this, they made no safety declarations. In fact, both are currently conducting active investigations on the health impacts of artificial turf and crumb rubber. They say more research is needed and that, not that the fields are safe. So if you're using those agencies to support your position, you're either uninformed or misleading the community. The NJDEP, yeah, they've approved turf grants, but they've never once stated that crumb rubber is safe for kids to play on. If anything, they've stayed silent while PFAS contamination and heat hazards pile up. That's not safety, that's institutional negligence. Then your favorite talking point is the Netherlands. You love to quote a five-year-old study, but you leave out the most important part, that that study contributed to a full European ban on crumb rubber turf. That ban takes effect in 2028 because of serious health and environmental concerns. You don't get to wave around the Netherlands as your proof and then ignore the ban that followed. That's not science, that's cherry picking. The European Chemical Agency and Norway's Public Health Institute raised major flags about cancer-causing chemicals. And those journals that you cited, Risk Analysis, Environmental Pollution, Technology Letters, those aren't safety endorsements, they're publication platforms, and they have actually published more studies warning about turf than defending it. You strung together a list to sound while ignoring the growing body of research on cancer risk, PFAS leaching, and microplastic pollution. And Keith, you seemed really, like, so deeply disturbed by the so-called misinformation being spread. Sir, with all due respect, the misinformation is coming from you. You claimed Ridgewood is following National Athletic Trainers Association heat guidelines. So again, let's talk about what that actually means. As you mentioned, we use the wet bulb globe temperature, which is based on air temperature, humidity, and sun. It does not measure turf surface heat. And on turf, surface temperatures reach 140 to 170 degrees, even when the air temperatures are below the so-called safety threshold. So I ask again, where are the closures? Where are the warning signs? Where are the shaded cooldown zones? Where is the enforcement of these protocols that you claim to follow? They weren't there because you don't follow the protocols. You weaponize it to appear responsible. The day you said those kids weren't on Maple, they were, because I was there, and I have video of them on Maple Field. So let's be honest, you are the one spreading misinformation. You gaslight parents, you distort science, you ignore environmental truth. So the next time you talk about those who spread information, look in the mirror. And lastly, to Winograd, it is very irresponsible, as you said at the last meeting, to have anyone out in that heat. That was exactly my point. So my challenge is still there. If the kids can be on it, so can you. Thank you.
Thank you, Amy. Anna, you're up.
Hi, good evening. I'm Anna Grossman calling in from Montclair about the artificial turf field that you guys are planning at Shedler. I wanted to let you know that I did a little experiment last week when it was 97 degrees. Here, I had a piece of turf, and I baked an egg on it. And it fully cooked, the yolk fully cooked, on artificial turf. Just, it took a few hours, and I could have eaten it if I wanted to. Probably non-stick too, because most artificial turf is made with PFAS. So why would you do that to your kids? Why would you put kids on a surface that is so hot that it can bake an egg? I don't understand. There's another problem with artificial turf. I live next to an artificial turf field. When it's hot and it rains, you get a stench like nothing before. We were today with an Essex County Health Department inspector trying to figure out what this stench is. All I can describe it as is infill soup, rubber crumb, hot, steamy soup, full of VOCs and PH, PAHs. With regards to what NJDP says or doesn't say, I think, you know, the most important thing is to look at the words that Commissioner Lotteret has spoken about the PFAS settlement. And I know you all have a problem with PFAS there. And, you know, if you see what he says, it really, it's impossible to reconcile his statement about the settlement that NJDP made with DuPont and the constant use of artificial turf in this state. And the fact that, you know, Green Acres funds it does not mean that NJDP Research and Science Division says that it's safe. You are in politics. You know that that's more of a political thing because of the pressure from the sports lobbies and people like you that relentlessly try and pollute the environment because you need the votes from the sports community. And you cannot possibly figure out how to maintain grass, right? Because never mind that you've got Rutgers Turf Grass Institute here, right at your disposal, and professional grass managers who could help you. Doesn't matter, right? You've just got to please those constituents so you get your votes, no matter what, and you're going to pollute the environment doing that, and you're going to ignore science, and then everybody's going to be happy, right? So honestly, I follow what's happening in Ridgewood. I think it's really embarrassing, the things I hear coming from that dais, and unfortunate. And you're just replicating what we're seeing at the federal level, which is you just abide by science when it's convenient for you. Otherwise, you completely ignore it. Thank you.
Thank you, Anna. Anybody else?
Anne Loving, Ridgewood resident. Thank you for letting me speak after the online people have spoken. The mayor has chastised me and others for laughing, smirking, smiling when comments are being made. This evening, Mr. Mayor, you were not here actually when Cynthia O'Keefe was speaking, but she was speaking directly to Mr. Mortimer. Two people were staring at her and paying attention to her every word, Councilman Whites and Councilwoman, the deputy mayor, Perrin. Mr. Mortimer, who was being addressed chapter and verse based on comments he made last week, you never looked at her. You were sipping your water, you were looking around, you were fixing your neck. You were so disrespectful. I wish you could have seen this, Mr. Mayor, because it flies in the face of what you chastised me and others for. Likewise, Ms. Winograd was never looking at Ms. O'Keefe when she spoke. It was horrifying. Thank you, you know, Mr. Whites and Ms. Perrin for at least being respectful.
Thank you, Anne. Anyone else? Seeing no one, I'm going to close public comment. I'm going to begin simply by saying, just so everyone is aware, forgive me for walking out while you were speaking, Ms. O'Keefe. I got something in my eye as I was driving up here, and I ran out to try and wash it out. Didn't really get it out, but I tried. So that's why I left. So I cannot comment on anything else that took place while I was gone. Does anybody else have any response to anything that was said this evening?
I do. So apologies if it seemed that way. I was taking notes on what you were saying so I could give you a proper response, because I'm assuming, you know, when you come, you always say you want us to respond. So a couple things, because the public is always listening, and I want to, outside of turf, we are not exploring crumb rubber. Crumb rubber is not an option for this council in any plan. We, on all the plans that we've submitted since this council's assembled, it has been eco-friendly. So in the information being put out there, we are not interested in crumb rubber. Our existing field right now does not have crumb rubber. In addition, because parents are listening, we do have heat guidelines, and we are aware that turf is hotter. It's not hot 365 days a year, so the days that it is hot, the field is closed. And there are guidelines that have been communicated to everybody who has rightful access to our fields. If somebody hops on by themselves, we can't really control that. We're trying to make it aware. But all the trainers that are registered with their proper insurance, all the groups that have it, that utilize our fields, have that communication. And we would not allow them to be out there outside of those guidelines, because we take, outside of our opinions on turf, we take it very seriously. What I was looking up is that, Cynthia, you referenced the EPA and Frank's studies. The EPA is a federally governed area, and when we're looking at turf, we're always looking to benchmark. And I want to make it clear that the federal government has approved turf in several key places. Just today, the Presidio, which is a national park, has a fully dedicated turf field. And believe it or not, the Congressional Cemetery, which is federally regulated, also utilizes turf in the preservation and their efforts to be more sustainable. So again, apologies, I do listen. I know you know I like to respond. It was not out of disrespect, it was I was looking for my notes. And I just want to be clear, Frank cited his sources, but at the federal level, which is where the EPA is, there's precedent in multiple states, and those are just two examples that are using turf as well.
Anybody else?
I apologize. I just was listening. I just wasn't looking, but I was listening because I can hear, so that's why I didn't look. But it wasn't meant to be disrespectful.
Anyone else? Seeing no one, we will move on. Keith, manager's report.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll be relatively brief tonight, but at the top of the agenda, I just want to congratulate our friends at Ridgewood Water. The state budget, which was passed or signed earlier this week by Governor Murphy, allocates $1 million in funding to Ridgewood Water for PFAS treatment. This will be specifically for the main PFAS treatment facility, which is going to be built in the borough of Glen Rock. I want to thank Governor Murphy and all the legislative teams who represent the constituent towns of Ridgewood Water for their constant efforts over the last few weeks to make sure that this million-dollar allocation was included in the fiscal year '26 state budget. This is a big win for us. We continuously are trying to take the burden of building these PFAS treatment facilities and the cost thereof off of the customer base in the four towns. We've done that through federal appropriations, through Congressman Gottheimer. We've received state funding now through our legislative teams and the governor's office. We are continuing to hold the polluters accountable when it comes to the litigation that continues down in Carolina. And we are also pursuing old insurance policies to try to offset the cost of the $150 million investment that is being made to mitigate PFAS in the Ridgewood Water service area. Also pleased to report that this week, through the help of our clerk, Heather Maylander, and with the cooperation of the leadership of the PBA and the SOA, we have signed the current contract for the PBA. Took a little while to get the wording right and to get both sides on the same page. The contract has been in place through an MOU over the last number of years, but the contracts are finally updated, signed, and we will be starting negotiation for the next round soon. I'm also optimistic that by the end of next week, we'll have our blue-collar contract signed, and then we'll be current with all of our labor contracts for the rest of the year. The Fourth of July Parade will be held this Friday. I do want to make a public announcement that the fourth floor of the Hudson Street Garage will be closed, both to parking and to folks congregating up there. In speaking to the Signal Department and Bob Bruni, who is the, our CFO, but he also heads up our parking utility, when the garage was built, the architectural firm was very clear that human weight is very different than vehicle weight. And to have a lot of people congregate at the top of the garage could be problematic. So last year and this year, we've taken the initiative to staff the fourth floor of the garage to make sure that people aren't congregating up there, that it's a safe environment during the fireworks display. So I just want to encourage people not to go to the Hudson Street Garage for purposes of viewing the fireworks. And finally, to some of what was said at public comment, as I mentioned at last week's meeting, the village does follow the NJSIAA guidelines and protocols for heat when it comes to utilizing our turf field at Maple. That policy, after last week's council meeting, was again distributed to all of our sports organizations through the Recreation Department. And I want to thank Nancy Bigos, our Director of Parks and Recreation, and Katie Frye, our supervisor. They made sure that that communication was again sent out during the heat. We have been monitoring the fields to make sure that it is appropriate, and the temperatures and the conditions of the field are appropriate to hold children, especially during our summer camp program in addition to our sports programs. As I mentioned last week, during the height of the heat wave, RBSA did cancel some of their programming at Maple. And we have not been utilizing Maple for summer camp unless the temperatures are appropriate to do so. So I just want to stress that that will continue to be monitored through the summer months. Just a few announcements. As I mentioned, the July 4th parade begins at 10:00 a.m. on Friday morning. The evening events will begin at 6:30 p.m. with entertainment and music at Veterans Field, and the fireworks will commence at approximately 9:15. Village offices and operations will be closed this Friday in observance of July 4th, and the recycling center will be closed as well. The Guild continues their music in the night on Friday nights downtown through Labor Day. And the Music in the Park concerts on Saturday evenings are conducted between 7:30 p.m. and 9:30 p.m. at Van Ness Square. Come out and enjoy the weekend music at Van Ness. The Guild is also sponsoring free movies in the park each Wednesday night at 9:00 p.m. at Van Ness. The Summer Concert Series at the Kasha Shell is each Tuesday and Thursday night from 8:00 p.m. and end at 10:00 p.m. The Farmer's Market is held on Sundays from 8:30 to 2:00 at the train station on the West Side. And finally, our upcoming village council meetings, July 9th is our public meeting, August 6th is our work session, and August 13th will be the public meeting in August. All began at 7:30 p.m. That's all I have, Deputy Mayor.
Thank you. Councilman Mortimer, do you have an update or updates?
I do not.
Councilman Whites?
So I would just like to echo Keith and I in talking about July 4th Committee, or July 4th Parade. I'm the liaison to the July 4th Committee. We had our final volunteer meeting on Monday. Pam was kind enough to cover for me last week when they had their final meeting with the, with our village staff. I wish so many people in this village could see the amazing work that goes on behind the scenes by our amazing employees and our wonderful, wonderful volunteers. As many of you heard me speak before, we take no public dollars. The amazing Tara Masterson, the amazing Gil Senin run this thing along with their just merry band of volunteers. I think, Pam, you said it best, they were sort of like two generals issuing out orders. It is a remarkable sight to see, and we are all the better for it. With that said, please go online, buy your tickets. There's a $4 discount if you buy it beforehand. The weather is supposed to be absolutely amazing, so we're hoping and expecting a pretty large crowd. But really, that's how we pay for this, is through those sales. But again, go online, save yourself $4. Additionally, there are 50/50 tickets available. Again, that's one of the ways that we fund this. You can get those online as well, or if you are here today, come see me. I'm already trying to use guilt on my fellow council members to buy tickets. I'm happy to report it has been successful, and everybody's been buying them from me. And as Keith mentioned, the parade itself, we have a flagpole raising at 9:00 in the morning at the train station. The parade itself will start in earnest at 10:00, right around GW Middle School, should be done probably by 12:00. And then we'll reopen the gates up at 6:15 at night for food, music, ahead of the fireworks at 9:15, which again, the weather should be wonderful, so we're expecting a wonderful, wonderful night. I will give a recap at the next meeting, but encourage all of you to go, encourage all of you to buy tickets, encourage all of you to buy 50/50 tickets. In fact, and I don't encourage all of you to go, I encourage all of you to go and bring like your friends and family and everybody else from outside Ridgewood as well. All right, that's all I got.
And through Deputy, through you Deputy Mayor to Councilman Whites, just to bring you up to speed, I know there was some discussion about the intersection improvements at Oak and Glenn. We had a very comprehensive meeting today internally with the engineering staff and with the police department. We have a meeting tomorrow morning at 9:00 a.m. with the county with a laundry list of issues that we want to talk through to determine what we can get county approval to do. So by our next council meeting, possibly a brief report at the July 9th meeting, but certainly at the August 6th meeting, we'll have a comprehensive report as to what direction all of those initiatives are going to head in.
Really appreciate that. Thank you.
Councilmember Winograd, do you have any updates?
I didn't have any meetings, but I did want to wish everybody a happy and healthy Fourth of July. And Evan meant to include this, that this is a day where unfortunately, our furry friends get very unhappy. So while you're celebrating, please make sure that your dog is registered, has its tags, your gates are closed. And if you need assistance, our police department is used to this day being a very busy dog day. But happy Fourth of July.
I have no updates this week, and so we'll turn to our presentation on Outside Air, Outside Art in Ridgewood. Jeanne Johnson and Kathy Wu, will you please come up?
Jeanne, if you could just make sure that both microphones are on and that the green light is showing. Hit the gray button. Perfect.
Okay. Thank you, everyone, for having us here again this evening. I have presented to this body several times in the past 18 months or more.
Is the green light on? Is the green light on?
My green light is on. Maybe if I scooch up. Okay, let me start over. Good evening, everybody, and thank you for having me here this evening. I have presented to this body several times in the past 18 months or more regarding public art installations. Unfortunately, the larger proposals are stuck, what I'm calling in bureaucratic jail. The historical, the historic architectural firm is still reviewing the pedestrian tunnel project, and NJ Transit is reviewing the trestle mural proposal. Therefore, I am here with my co-chair, Kathy Wu Brady, on behalf of the Outside Air Art in Ridgewood Committee, and we would like to install several miniature interactive murals throughout the central business district. They will complement the installations we already have up at the Bike Shop, Rossi Paint Store, and the Playhouse. So without further ado, here are our suggestions. Okay, so the air mission is to create a more vibrant and connected community where the streets are alive with art, culture, and community spirit, and there will be social media interaction and a strong support. Hang on a minute. You could tell that my forte is not PowerPoint presentation, so just bear with me one moment, friends.
Do great, Jeanne.
Thank you so much. Do you want a paper copy? So it will show strong support for local businesses, and that equals a robust central business district. So the small interactive art installations are murals and 3D art that capture the imagination and delight the viewer in a small footprint. Passersby's will be inspired to stop, admire, take a photo, and share with others, bringing more attention to our downtown. We plan to put QR codes on each installation and have a landing page so participants can find out where all these installations are, and they can share it on their social media. And the actual installations, I don't know what that actual slide says, so we're just going to move on.
It's right there.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Who's next? Maybe not. It's okay. It's all right. So the artists are Jackie Carter, who has a, Jackie Carter has a business called Artists and Crafts, and Elsa Carbone, who is a former art teacher in Midland Park and a former Ridgewood resident. Bob Lebo is a Ridgewood resident and retired art teacher in New York City, and Athena Maxwell, the AP art instructor at Ridgewood Public High School, and Kathy Wu Brady, who is seated here with me, who is an art... here with me, who is an artist working with the Bridgewood Art Institute. So the next slide. There we go, we got it. The collaborators on this, and again, we haven't had an endorsement from these organizations, but we do have several people on our committee from these organizations. The Bridgewood Public Art, Bridgewood Public School Art Department, the National Art Honor Society, the Bridgewood Art Institute, the Bridgewood Arts Foundation, and of course, the Bridgewood Arts Council. And potential art ideas and locations are at The Wine Cellar on West Bridgewood Avenue, Stella on South Broad Street, Sweet Kitchen on Oak Street, and I have Stella on there again, Brooklyn Pizza on Oak Street, the Post Office, Color Me Mine on Bridgewood Avenue, and 11 Oak Street, and World Flats on Walnut. And this is Wine Cellar. There's a little nook and cranny there, and we thought it would be really cool to paint some grapes to keep, to stay in keeping with the wine. And the next slide is in front of Stella on the Broad Street side, and Bob Lebo is an incredible artist that I think it would be really cute to have a little puppy dog poking out of that little window that is boarded up. And the next slide is at Sweet Kitchen. I don't know what this little metal piece is that comes out of the brick, but I thought it would be kind of cute to turn it into a clock with the numbers falling, just something really whimsy. And the next piece is Little Cow peeking her head out around the corner at Sweet Kitchen. The next slide is from Brooklyn Pizza, and you see on the right there are silhouettes of people looking out the windows, and Athena Maxwell is going to do something in keeping with this. She suggested the chef twirling a pizza, throwing it out the window to the person in the upper window area there, and a person catching that. The next slide is the flagpole in front of the post office. You see that we can turn that into a cute little hat for a very serious law enforcement officer. And the next slide, I love this, it is a compilation of some installations that one would be a butterfly, one would be a bouquet of balloons, and one would be bubbles that people are blowing. And again, it's interactive, so Jackie Carter designed this, and with the idea that the wings of the butterfly would tell a story about the artist, and also show an image of the art, of that artist, and same thing with the balloons and the bubbles. So the next slide is we propose the balloons to go on the Color Me Mine wall on Bridgewood Avenue, and the next slide would be the butterfly to go on 11 Oak Street. And these things would be made out of hardy board, so we could change the installation at any time and repaint over the hardy board and change the artists. And so if you see here in the next slide, the artists that she's proposing are Vincent Van Gogh, Jackson Pollock, Claude Monet, and Georgia O'Keeffe. And like she said, there's community building here. It's interesting, it's interesting attracting people to the downtown, it's inspiring, and most importantly, it's educational, which we always love. The next slide is the Verizon Building, and because it's located near the Dairy Queen, we have a sketch of a cute little raccoon drinking a milkshake. And finally, for the interactive art, this is at World Flats, and we are proposing that some flowers start blowing out of that vent, if you see, and then kind of cascading down the pole on the, on the west-facing wall of World Flats. And now we're proposing some seasonal installations. We're proposing a summer installation of a paint tube, fall of googly eyes, winter yarn bomb, and the spring umbrellas. And the next slide, the sophisticated whimsy installations were inspired by other locations across the globe. The paint tube is found in Bologna, France, the googly eyes at the Arboretum in Washington, D.C. The yarn bomb has taken place in many communities across New Jersey, including Fairlon. And the umbrellas, you know, that started in Quebec City, it's in Flushing, Queens, and Bangor, Maine, and Newport, Rhode Island. So if you want to just take a picture of those, Larissa Chablot has introduced the idea of the art tube to our Parks and Recreation Director, Nancy Bigos, and Nancy was thrilled with that. So we're proposing putting that out sometime very soon somewhere in Bridgewood. And of course, the googly eyes could be located in Van Ness Park, and it would just be something really fun for the fall months, kind of in keeping with the Halloween. And the next slide is the yarn bomb. If you see that these are granny squares that volunteers have put together, and I am proposing to keep it uniform, I am proposing that we use the PSCNG light poles in town if we could get permission for that, and I know I owe you an email on that, Keith, and I'll get to that as soon as possible. And so we're proposing getting this together in time for Downtown for the Holidays, which is on Friday, December the 5th this year.
And Jeannie, if I could just make mention, with regard to any type of art installation at Van Ness Square, we've already talked to the committee, we've talked to Parks and Rec, and I also had a conversation with the Guild subsequently to you and I speaking. All of it's going to be kept away from the War Memorial and from the Gold Star Memorial out of respect for that placement in the park. So all, everyone who's involved in this is well aware of the distance that we want to keep between any type of art installation and the respective memorials.
Absolutely, thank you. And so the next is the umbrellas, and these umbrellas are really interesting. You buy the kits, they're very common, and they're made of umbrella and, I'm sorry, aluminum and polyester, and the top of the umbrella has a hole in it, and you just thread that through some wiring, and what my suggestion would be to put them on, again, to where the kissing balls are on the light poles and sort of thread them that way. That's just what I kind of thought we could do there. And finally, the last slide, this is all, you know, hinging on the approval of the village council, of course, the landlords, which we are already working on, PSCNG, and the Historic Preservation Commission. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Jeannie.
Thank you, Jeannie. This is a lovely presentation. I want to open it up to council, get your thoughts.
Can I go first?
By all means.
And Paul, I'm glad you're here because I'm going to reference Sweden. So actually, in my wife's hometown of Urbrue, they have, it's outdoor art, open art, excuse me, where they, every two years, they invite different artists to do things in the downtown. And so the seasonal ones that were in here really reminded me of that. And I know firsthand, it drives a lot of traffic, that's why they do it every other year, and so I think this is awesome. I really, I really like the flagpole one, and then again, the seasonal, because I think it's, it's more whimsical and unique, and everything from the umbrellas to the kites, I think would just be great, too. So I'm fully, fully in favor of this.
Thank you.
I'd also like you to come to CBDAC, to the Central Business District Advisory Committee, and make this presentation as well. It's charming. I can't wait for it to go into effect.
Yeah, it's, I think you're going to have overwhelming support from all of us. It's just a wonderful, wonderful, wonderful idea. I want to thank you and everybody else who had a hand in this. Just a couple of suggestions. So I would also ask that just building and police, just have a look at it, make sure that they're not striking any sightlines, doesn't, anything, doesn't cause any access. I'm sure it's fine, and I'm sure Keith can facilitate a very quick review by them. I'm happy to work with you on HPC, that's my committee. I think I do speak for them. None of this stuff is going to be problematic. I think they want to just take a look and see it, but as long as we're not doing anything permanent to any of the facades, I can't imagine they'll have an issue, but I'm sure they'll appreciate weighing in on it. When do you think something like this could actually happen?
You know, that's interesting. I think there is a slide on there, and I'm sorry that my PowerPoint didn't reflect that. So my suggestion is that as soon as we get the approvals from the landlords, then I can present that to HPC. And once all those approvals are done, we'll stagger the installations, and I would love to see the murals all installed by October 1st of 2025, because that's when we start to have some really fun things happening in town. We have the Fall Festival, we have Oktoberfest, we've got, the Guild has something. So I think it would really open that up and have people really engaged in it, and continue then on through those winter months.
Yeah, my only suggestion would be, once you get the landlords involved, or they get their approval, talk to Keith, get everyone's approval here, because like HPC, we meet once a month, and I will make sure that you get on the first meeting that we have after you're ready to go. But I think if you come to HPC, and I would assume eventually CBDAC wants to see it as well, if you have the approvals from everyone in the village, it'll be a lot easier, you know, because we want to be thoughtful and smart about this, but we want to do this.
Thank you.
And one thing for HPC is that, back to Sweden, they have a castle that was built in the 1200s, so I think if historically it's okay for that, it'd be okay there.
It's always best Sweden.
Siobhan?
Sure. So first of all, super impressive, love it, I think it was great. As you know, Asbury Park has a huge commitment, and I've seen that firsthand with the Instagram of the locations. Just a couple of things, it's perfect. I'm wondering, in an effort to speak to our committees faster, can we get this PowerPoint electronically sent to the full council so we can share it with our committees? I mean, you don't need any of mine's blessing, but Beautification would love to see it.
Great. You know, I'll send you the updated, I'll send you one, a more updated one than what you got this week.
Perfect.
Okay, great.
And two things that, actually, three things. One, if you need help with the amplification of social media, we do have an official intern program, and they have a untapped audience, and we can send them around, and they can start that. We have several high school students, and that would be fun. We also, with the Instagram of a location and a public art background, we are redoing the bus station. And it might, October will be too early, but it would be, I would love to see a welcome to Bridgewood in a historical whimsical interpretation, because that's a nice gateway for those coming. And lastly, again, for the next time, we've had several special needs art programs at the stable. We have a lot of steps kids who are really artistic and expressive, and I think it would be love from the inclusionary for them, because they're just artists like everybody else I'd love to connect to. We did have, for National Down Syndrome Day, we had some public art, and then SpecWire, which I know did a wonderful thing. So just, you know, for round two, because, and hopefully it'll be round 200. I loved it.
Thank you.
I don't want to take up too much time, but it was so good.
I just realized that there were a couple of slides missing, actually, the budget slide was missing, so I'm actually looking for $1,350. The interactive murals with the painted murals, all the supplies for that will be donated by Rossi Paint Stores. And the seasonal installations, the paint tube will be donated by a Bridgewood Arts Foundation member, Larissa Chablot. And the googly eyes are $200. The granny squares will be donated by local organizations who will do that crocheting, but we'll need a small amount of money for the assembly of it, and I'm proposing that at $150. And the umbrellas are about $1,000. They come in kits of 10, so that is what I am looking for there. So we'll have to have that conversation at some point, too.
Jeannie, first, let me say, as I always do, thank you so much for wanting to make our Central Business District as special as we think it is, and letting everyone know it, and the time and effort you put into these things. I still remember during COVID when you were laying on your back painting the, the blocks because they were less than attractive, and so you decided to hire an army and, and paint them, and so, you know, this, this is just what you do, and it is so greatly appreciated. Yes, I love this idea also. I have some questions about it. So, so we're going to do this, we're going to figure out where to get the money, it's all going to happen. Maintenance of this down the road, is there a committee? I mean, I would imagine this is going to be popular for a while. At some point, someone's going to decide to replace it with something different. So how would the maintenance and the replacement and a committee or whatever work?
Well, I'm glad you asked that, because we actually have, we've been having meetings about this for, gee, almost two years, and at last count, we have 30 people on the committee, and everyone is on board with whatever we, you know, if I ask somebody, they're like, sure, I can do that, sure, I can do that. So we are not at a loss for volunteers to help us, and that includes the maintenance part.
So, and replacements, have you thought that far in advance? And again, I know we're trying to get it up and running, I think that that's going to likely happen, but how would you handle, say, you know, you know what, we're going to, we got a new idea for where the granny squares are, let's put up something else?
You know, I have not thought past these initial seasonal installations, but I am sure that there are plenty of people on the committee that will come up some really great ideas. As far as the hardy board, butterflies, balloons, and bubbles, I love what Jackie has presented to us to change it seasonally and put new artists on it seasonally, on those things seasonally. It's, it's educational, and it's inspiring. You know, I love what Eric said earlier, too. I mean, art is therapy, art is exciting, it's something that everybody can appreciate, so.
Great. I think you have the full support of this council, and what I would say is to go to all of the other places you need to go, we'll figure out the money.
Great, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jeannie.
Thank you.
And moving along?
Thank you, Mayor. Moving on to the agenda items tonight, our first agenda under budget is an updated proposal for the Glen Pickleball Court renovation. After multiple resident requests being considered by the Parks and Recreation Board, Nancy has updated the proposal so that the request would include two additional courts at the existing location. The total estimate to move from four to six courts is in total $67,000, which is $28,000 above what was initially approved by the governing body. Nancy has worked with the Finance Department to find the funding through old capital funds, which are listed in the memorandum, and she is recommending that we revise the award for renovation of the Glen Pickleball Courts to be awarded to Sports Tech Acrylics of Brewster, New York through the Sourcewell Co-op Contract. This resolution will rescind and replace Resolution 25158. Councilman Mortimer, I don't know if you have anything you want to add on this, but I know you've been actively discussing this with the Parks, Recreation, and Conservation Board.
Yeah, thank you. What's great about this is it comes at the perfect time, because we were planning on resurfacing the pickleball courts, and I think as many of us know, that pickleball, the popularity continues to increase, so being able to go from four to six is, is going to serve more of our residents. So I think, I'm really excited that we're able to move on this.
And you said all the extra money is, was found in some old capital accounts?
Yes.
You just give us, can you just kind of?
They're actually listed in the memorandum.
Yeah, I saw that, but so these are just counts of where we had extra money left over from previous projects, and I?
Yes. They piecemealed it together to be able to add the two additional courts.
That's great.
Anybody else? I just want to, I just want to be clear for the public that it is not $67,000 to go from four to six courts, it is $28,000, the $39,000 that's part of that amount is for the original resurfacing. So it's only an additional, for $28,000, we're getting 50% more pickleball courts. I think it's money well spent. Thank you for doing that, Keith.
I apologize if that wasn't clear, but that's.
It was, it was very.
Well summarized, Mayor.
I just wanted, you know, sometimes things don't come out as clearly as we think.
Understood. It's been a long day here, so. Next item on the agenda is an insertion of revenue of the 2025 municipal budget, and this is for the Strengthening Local Public Health Capacity Program Grant, and this is a Chapter 159 to add it to the, this year's municipal budget. Total amount, $24,951 in receivable grant money.
Questions?
No, I would see more of this. This is good stuff, I like this.
Free money, good.
Let's go.
Add to the budget all day long, Keith. Or the budget, sorry, the revenue budget, not the expenditures.
Okay, the next item is a carryover from last week's work session, and this is the award of the contract for the roof replacement here at Village Hall. The Engineering Department, with the help of the Signal Division, received two quotes from vendors off of the Bergen County Cooperative Purchasing Program. This project will include the removal of the solar panels, which was discussed in detail with both vendors. The low quote was from MV, the MG Group. Their quote was dated July, June 1st, 2025. The low quote was from MV, the MG Group, their quote was dated July, June 1, 2025. The roof replacement will require the removal of the solar panels from the roof. The panels have, are approximately 15 years old, and they have not provided electricity to the building for a number of years due to cable and conduit failures. When the solar panels are removed, all the cabling and conduit related to them will also be removed by the contractor. The cabling will be recycled, conduit is plastic and will be discarded. For the solar panels, we are investigating if the village can sell them on gov deals instead of disposing of them. The panel's supplying approximately 255 watts per panel, just above the minimum for resale. The steel and aluminum supporting structure for the panels will be recycled through the village's scrap metal program. Total contract award for this project is not to exceed $39,600. I know the deputy mayor had some questions, we put her in contact with engineering to get those questions answered, but if there's any other questions, glad to take them now.
Well, what I learned is that we have leaks in the clerk's office, the engineering office, and in the village manager's office as a result of this roof, so I think it does need to be replaced.
Questions, anybody? Let's go.
Okay, the next item is also from engineering, and this is a recommendation for a contract award to repair the eastbound kiosk 1 at the Ridgewood Train Station. This is where we had an automobile accident some time ago. We had to go out to formal bid on this, because it is a SHPO-regulated project. We received awards on June 18th, we had seven registered plan holders, six returned bids. Bids ranged from $98,000 on a low side to the high side of $227,000. The apparent low bidder is Here Construction Incorporated, from South Ozone Park, New York. They are a historic contractor, and they will be able to perform this work. The work will be funded from the village's insurance trust account, as well as any reimbursement from the responsible party involved with the motor vehicle accident through their insurance. Total contract award, as I mentioned earlier, on the low bid, $98,000.
Questions?
No, I just wanted to say thank you, obviously, for the public. This is at the top of East Ridgewood Avenue, on the circle there, sort of the oval, that's where the location is. So outside of all the good stuff that we're doing at the train station, this is a necessary repair for something that has been extremely unsightly. I want to thank everybody who reported it, who's been patient with us. My only question is, assuming we award this next week, when do you think this is all going to be finished? Is there potential before school starts?
I don't know that, it really is going to come down to the contractor's schedule. We don't normally conduct a pre-construction meeting until the contract's awarded by the council, but as soon as we do that, we'll certainly get in touch with them and get a timeframe for you.
Thank you.
And for the public who doesn't see our memo, we are also trying to recover money from the insurance company of the driver who caused the damage to this brickwork. And there is also damage on the west side to one of, we call them the kiosks, they're the things that house the stairwell and the ramps. And so there's another one on the other, on the west side that needs repair, and that's going to be done when we do the tunnel.
Everybody good?
Very good. Under policy tonight, we have the nomination of Isabella Altano for the New Jersey Historical Commission Award of Recognition. I know Heather put together the nomination recommendation on this, so I'll turn it over to Heather to summarize this nomination.
I just put together the memo, but what I wanted you to know, I don't see my memo here, I'm sorry, here. So it's basically to honor Isabella for all her work, for the Zeburnski Shubler House, for all the things she did to move it forward, to bring it before the council, to be able to recognize those efforts, and to realize that really she was, along with others, the impetus, though, to move it forward. I know Councilmember Wintergrad also probably wanted to say a few words.
Sure, and I think Pam, too. So, both Pam and I had the pleasure of working with Isabella as a League of Women Voters Director, and her focus was very targeted on the House. We have reached out to her family. When we became aware of this award, we felt, and so did many other people, including members of prior councils, that she was the person who should be associated with the House. So, that's all that I want to say. I want to say thank Heather, and Pam, and members of the charity that got in touch with their family, and I think there was, it's nice when there's universal consensus from other players that she's the one who should be the recipient.
Yeah, I agree. Isabella was diligent, and knowledgeable, and so persuasive, I'm thankful for all the work that she did, and I'm happy to see her recognized.
Everybody good?
Yeah, it's great.
Mayor, with your permission, I'm going to hold Item D2 until we get to the last agenda item, so that Beth McManus, our planner, only has to come up before the council once. So we'll move to Item 3, which is from engineering. This has to do with the North Walnut Street parking lot. This is to renew site access. As you know, we've been working with the Elm Group, which is doing the environmental work at 120 Franklin Avenue, the Old Town Garage site. They're requesting a renewal to the access agreement to the reference location. This request will allow them to be able to continue to sample the groundwater monitoring wells on the village's parking lot, on the North Walnut Street parking lot site. This will allow for them to continue to monitor those wells for the next two years. This is something that we've worked with them on in the past, and the agreement that we have in place is about to expire, and we're looking to renew that agreement for another two-year period.
Everybody good?
Yeah.
Let's go.
Okay, the next item on the agenda is with regard to the wording of the ballot question for the referendum to, for the public's consideration of increasing the Ridgewood Open Space Tax Levy. So I'll open up to this to the council for discussion, based on the proposed wording that was sent out by Heather in the memorandum attached.
So what we did is that we looked at Middletown Township's wording on their ballot, and the reason we did that is that, in addition to approving an open space tax, they've increased their open space tax three different times, and they currently have four cents per hundred dollars is what their open space was approved this last November. And of course, that this ballot will just be to get from a half a penny to a full penny, is what we're looking here. Also think that this wording is much clearer of what our intention is, and for that, I'd like to thank Deputy Mayor and Matt Rogers for helping with that, because I think that when this has previously appeared on the ballot, it was saying like it was a new tax, and this is when in 2004, 2005, and it's not a new tax, it's that we're increasing, not updating our existing one, to reflect a potentially one cent or one penny per hundred dollars. And we also have included an explanatory statement, which also was missing on previous ballots.
Also, I did want to say that some people wrote to me and said, can you specify in this wording that the funds would not be used for artificial turf? And I checked that out with our village attorney, and we can't, is the short answer. We need to present this question in the most neutral way possible, without swaying anyone's vote. So that's the reason it's stated the way it is, without that language.
Just, so I can add to that, so everybody understands in the public, the statute that covers this gives a, has prescribed seven purposes of the open space tax, and it allows you to at least identify which of those seven purposes you want, if you want to be specific with regard to the uses. At any time that any of the open space money is used in the future, there has to be a public hearing with regard to that, and the referendum can't supplant the decision to be made by the council about how to spend it at a later date. So if there's any discussion with regard to turf, non-turf, that would be done at the time of the spending of the money, so.
So, I have a question, because I was, I was explaining this to someone, and I was trying to be clear about this. And the concern, the first thing this person said was, so you want to increase it to 1%? And, yeah, I know, I know what it says, I, believe me, I see exactly what it says. And I was wondering, could we add in, because the, and this person said to me, so how much would it cost on my house? How much would it cost me? And so I did the arithmetic, and it turned out to be such a nominal amount, it was, it was so low. And I was wondering if we could include in the explanatory statement an example of a house that is valued at the average?
Yeah, you'd have to do, you'd have to do it on the aver, if it's permissible, and I'll defer to Matt on that, but you'd have to do it on the average house, similar to how we illustrate the tax increase when we adopt the budget.
Yes, and that's exactly what I had in mind, you know, a house, if the average house is 710,000 or something like that, that this would increase the tax X amount of dollars, so that everyone understands?
Sure.
What that is. I think that that is illustrative, to give that kind of an example.
And we definitely have that, this, I'm talking about open space here, that, to present that information, as we explain to people what the tax is. I did send Matt some information of how to, asking if it could be included in the explanation statement, and Matt said it has to be as neutral as possible on that as well, so, I don't know, Matt, if you want to?
Yeah, the question, the question I suppose is whether or not that's informative, or?
Persuasive.
Persuasive, better, good word. And I'll take a look and get back to you within the next, you know, over the weekend or the next day or two.
Yeah, and I think it's simply an example, by way of example, this is how much it will cost, so that someone could say, okay, that's $700,000, my house is $350,000, it's not.
It may just be illustrative, and.
So, so just procedurally, and from a timing standpoint, we're getting to crunch time with Heather's ability to submit this to John Hogan's office for placement on the ballot? So, if there's going to be a consensus about having Matt research whether or not that average assessment, average assessed house tax increase should be placed into the question, into the expla, explanatory statement, is there a consensus that that's the way we move forward? Because you're going to need to vote on this next week, in order to meet the county clerk's deadlines.
My point would be that, Paul, that Middletown Township has got an increase three separate times, and so this wording here is based on what they wrote, and since they did not have that, I would feel more comfortable going as closely to them, since they achieved the increase. And they're at four cents at 100 bucks, four cents.
Let me find out first if it's permissive, and then you guys can discuss it next week.
I think, I think Keith's point is, Keith's point is, let's see if, if there is a consensus of the majority of the council to include this statement or not, so that once Matt gets his opinion, then Keith and Heather can just move on it, without this having to come back to the council.
Yeah, my point is, if you're going to add this to the ballot for November 4th, you need to vote on this next week. Because, because the ballot question, because the vote-by-mail ballots go out for the third weekend in September, the ballot questions are due in mid-August, and your council meeting in August is not till the 13th.
So, can I say a couple things? One, I love the idea, Paul, but I want to make sure the public understands, while we're placing the question on the ballot, we are not allowed to sway the public as to vote yes or no. So the question, where it might be clarifying to us, unless there's a precedent of somebody else doing that on a ballot, because it is a dedicated text, I don't really want to do it. I don't want to be the first to put that dollar amount on there. So, I think with open space, it's pretty simple for taxpayers who are watching this, we have several dedicated taxes, this one is up for question, whether or not the public wants to increase it. And I just, I'm a little, like, I don't want the question to be called into question that we're swaying. So unless somebody else has put a value, I'm not really comfortable with including it.
I've never seen it in a ballot question, or an explanatory statement printed on the ballot, where I have seen it is on, like, Q and A material that has been produced to educate people about the ballot question, but that's separate and distinct from the question itself.
So can I offer maybe an alternative? And by the way, I think most of us will vote for it regardless next week, so I think, you know, the way it stands now is fine, Frank, I'm good with it. It sounded like, you know, the point of confusion, Paul, with your friend, and some of us who are math adverse, and I may count myself amongst these, is that one cent is not 1%, it's 1/10 of 1%. So perhaps if we can't give an example of this is how it will affect the average household, we make it clear, you know, one cent of every hundred dollars, or 1/10 of 1% overall, might be easier, but again, this should not hold us up to vote on this next one.
Well, and that's why I use the word penny in here, because, Paul, I had a similar conversation, and somebody kept hearing percentage, even though we were saying cent, so that's why it says penny, so it makes it.
Listen, I know what this says, I know that I walk into, into the voting booth, and there's a long line, and there are ballot questions, and there are explanatory statements, and I'm still not sure what they say. And I'm pretty good at reading this stuff. And what I always find illustrative is simply, so how much is this going to cost me? That's all. And it is not persuasive, it is, it's that this much blurb says to me more than this paragraph. It is clearer, and that's all I'm looking for, is clarity for the person who is running between dry cleaning and picking up their kids to vote, because, you know, you get two paragraphs here, and, you know, many of them don't even know what an open space trust fund is. And so they're, they're learning about it now, they're trying to do the math, and Evan, with respect to your point of, well, it's 1/10 of 1%. It's just, whereas, okay, on a $700,000 house, it's going to cost, whatever that amount is, 20 bucks. Okay, now I know it's going to cost 20 bucks, I'm going to vote for it, because I don't think it's a lot, or I'm going to vote against it, because I don't want my taxes to go up 20 bucks.
Before, I do want to say, because I've been, I'm going to, there will be an effort to inform the voter of what it is. We'll work with the League of Women Voters and other people. Look, as long as we're not the first, I'm okay with it, and I'm fine with it, but general voter awareness, we do have people who end a fully dedicated smart committee who's going to market this, to inform people. So I'm, I, I feel you, I hear you. I mean, I will tell you that my kids, when, the night before they vote, I make them spend at least a half hour going through their ballot, I think everybody should do that.
But everybody doesn't?
I know, I know, I just, I just don't want us to be suggestive, and I do want to say to the public, there will be an effort to create an awareness on this, and hopefully, Heather, when the question's committed, we get great placement on the ballot, and it's not on the last, last page.
One thing, if we are going to look for additional language, please don't use the term equalized value that was used in Middletown. I spoke with our tax assessor, and that is just so variable.
Every town has a separate equalized value.
That's right, and so I think assessed value is what we should stick with.
And by the way, I don't know what equalized value means, people, you know, many people don't know what assessed value means, you know, these are terms that, again, if you just tell somebody how much it's going to cost them, then they can make a clear and informed decision. I don't think that this is something that is, because someone hasn't done it before, doesn't mean that it's a bad thing, and.
So I have one question, so if Matt says we can do it, so are you, would you like to see, it'll cost, like, on average, it'll be this much more? Like, the increase from a half a cent to a full cent would be approximately $36 per household, or do we list the combined one cent?
No, I, what the increase should be, that's what I think it is, because, because this is already in your, in your, in your, in your tax bill, and so if you vote yes for this, if you have a $700,000 house, it will cost $36. And then that person can make that decision, saying, I don't want to spend the $36, or, yeah, 36 bucks ain't so much.
So, then I would say, how about that Matt and I work on it, and if he says it's, it's legal, then I'll work on the language.
Terrific, that's, that's all I'm looking for.
Okay, so Matt, I'll just connect with you later.
Yeah, if I was going to find out, and if I found out it was legal, I was going to, I'll make sure to find out the legal language, so.
Okay.
So we'll work on it together.
Everybody, and I appreciate, everybody good with that?
Yeah.
Great, I appreciate your involvement.
Can I make my joke that this is what happens when you have three lawyers on the board looking at language? We've been talking about the language for this ballot, and it is super important, it just is so interesting to me to have three lawyers, three separate ways.
So, and let's move on.
The next item on the agenda is the Special Improvement District Ordinance. I'm going to hand this one to the deputy mayor, since in large part, she is the force behind this ordinance.
The idea of the Special Improvement District is that the property owners in Ridge, the commercial property owners in Ridge- the commercial property owners in Ridgewood should get together and pay an assessment that would be used by this Special Improvement District, which would incorporate as a nonprofit for the betterment of the commercial and merchant community. This would not be funded by taxpayers. It's funded by property owners. And so, this is sanctioned by the legislature. They came up with it in the 1980s. Many towns in New Jersey have done this. And the steering committee that we appoint, that the village appointed, has been researching for months and months. And we had a presentation back in March, and we just, last week, at our last meeting, adopted the, the report of the feasibility study that the steering committee did. And so, this is now the ordinance that would create the Special Improvement District. There are two changes I'd like to make here, and one is the name of the District Management Corporation. Rather than being the Ridgewood Village Alliance, Inc., it, it should be the Ridgewood Business Alliance, Inc. And I polled everybody in the steering committee, and they're all in favor of it. The reason to do that is because we also have a municipal alliance, which is our program for drug and alcohol rehabilitation, and we don't want to get people mixed up. The other change I would like to make is in Section 5. This sets out the statutory powers that include, but not are, but are not limited to, and there's a list of 17 different powers in the statute. They're not all the powers that could be enforced here. We have an 18th one, and it, it is a power very like what you see our Historic Preservation Committee, that the commission does. And I don't see the reason to duplicate that, and I'm concerned that that might lead to undue delay for the applicants. And so, I, I would suggest we strike 18. That's about on page four. Section 5, number 18.
Certainly would recommend both of those.
Yep.
I agree. I didn't like 18.
Same.
Yep. Yeah. If it became necessary in the future, you know, we could amend the ordinance. They could, the, the District Management Corporation could come back to the village council and ask for an amendment, but at this time, I don't think we need it.
And Pam, I know we had talked about some apologies for bringing this up. So, the list of businesses, is this binding, or is this still something that will be discussed?
I can answer.
I think it has to be fluid, because things get sold.
Yeah, per when I spoke, so I, I would like to say, first off, that I really had a lot of questions, based on the, the presentation we had last week, and with this, and all my questions have been answered, so I'm very much in favor of it. So, asking one of the questions is for you, Evan, is that the, the idea is to list every possible business in Appendix A, and then when the budget gets done, then that, whatever is needed will be on there. Meaning that if we, if they didn't include certain businesses, or the F1s, that they, then we'd have to revise this to include them later. So, we can subtract, but we can't add.
Gotcha. All right, so that actually answers my question. So, I mean, I have some, I know, Pam, we've discussed offline. I have some questions, and I know we've discussed this, Frank, as well, about the inclusion of certain properties or not, but based upon that, I have no problem voting in favor of this at this point.
And one thing, Evan, since you weren't here for the presentation, that made me feel comfortable about that, is that when the final board is established, it will represent not just the central business district, but other of the properties around town that will also be included in this.
And I just want to clarify one thing, that this is not a list of the businesses.
Right.
It is a list of the properties. And the, and the bill goes to the property owners. Now, there, in, in certain instances, I'm, I'm sure that, in some cases, some of those will be passed along to the business owners, but it is the property owner that is responsible, and that is what we're talking about here.
The business owners who are tenants you're talking about?
Yes.
Yep.
Yes. Would, would, they, some of them will likely wind up paying this. But at the end of the day, it's kind of like the, the water, Ridgewood Water. The bills go to the property owners, not to the businesses. The property owners ultimately responsible. Many times in their leases, they pass that responsibility off to the, to the business owner.
Thank you all for your questions, and for reading all these, you know, lengthy documents.
And Pam, thank you so much, the time and effort you put into this. I don't know that I would use Keith's terminology of you being the horse that pushed this, but I, but...
She was the force that pushed me.
But I do, but I, but I do, but I, but you really were a force on this, so.
I, I do want to say, I really appreciate looking at the name again. I'm very happy about that. And I also want to say thank you to Heather, because this ordinance was like on the top of a pin. So, it was awesome job, Pam. Thank you.
Let's move on.
Okay, Mayor, the last two items, both concern our planner, Affordable Housing Planner, Beth McManus. So, Beth, if you would like to come up. We have two items for Beth to discuss with you tonight. One is amendment to Chapter 190 of the Village Code. This is land use and development. It's the establishment of an S1 Senior Overlay Zone District. And the second item, which she can speak about as well, is to endorse the Fourth Round Housing Element and Fair Share Plan, which was adopted by the Ridgewood Planning Board and met all the requisite deadlines of being submitted by the end of June to the state of New Jersey. So, Beth, the floor is yours.
Thank you very much. So, I thought, I'm happy to take things in any order the council would like, but I thought we would start with the S1 zoning ordinance. So, this is an ordinance that is intended to facilitate an assisted living facility. It is a property that is along North Maple, but it is the, sort of the front half of the block between Franklin and Marshall. There are a few office buildings on that site, and the concept is that they would be redeveloped with an assisted living facility.
Beth, if you could speak a little more closely into the microphone.
Yes, I'd be happy to. So, along, along North Maple, between Franklin and Marshall Street. This is a property that came to the village through the affordable housing process. What typically happens as municipalities are planning for their affordable housing obligation, developers will come forward and say, hey, I'd like to be part of your plan, essentially. This was one example of it. However, instead of seeking what is typical or very common, inclusionary development, this developer was, was interested in assisted living specifically for this property. And so, what we have now is an adopted housing plan by your planning board, and that, and the endorsement of that plan is, I think, the, the second item for me this evening. We have in your adopted housing plan, this site is listed as one of your affordable housing mechanisms, and that is because assisted living facilities are actually able to provide municipalities affordable housing credit. They're, they're all licensed by the state of New Jersey. Through that licensing, they're obligated to reserve 10% of their beds for Medicaid residents or Medicaid recipients, and those beds give us affordable housing credit. And so, that's the, sort of the vehicle for having developers insert themselves into our affordable housing process and being able to account for it in our housing plan. And so, what this ordinance does is, essentially, it's a follow-up to the housing plan, in the sense that we did the big planning by identifying the location and the, the number of beds, which is about approximately 120 in your housing plan. And so, this ordinance would be the implementation of what's stated in your housing plan. And so, more specifically, it is, it would be the creation of an overlay district referred to as the S1 District, the Senior, Senior 1 Overlay District. An overlay zone, just so that we're all clear, an overlay zone creates an additional layer of zoning for a property, so that there is essentially a choice for the property owner. They can either proceed under the, what would be the existing or the underlying zoning, or alternatively, they can utilize this, in this case, the S1 Overlay District. And so, it's really a choice between the two, but not necessarily a menu of options, where they can choose maybe the front yard setback from Zone 1, side yard setback from Zone 2, et cetera. You need to choose one or the other. So, this S1 Overlay District really has one purpose, and that is to permit the assisted living facility that is set forth in our housing plan already. And so, it provides for development of that property, which is a little more than 1 1/4 acres. It sets the minimum lot size at 1 1/4 acres. And it would allow for up to, or approximately 120 beds, and 10% of those would be obligated to be reserved for Medicaid, which means that it would then generate our affordable housing credits, consistent with your housing plan. And so, the, the ordinance has been guided by some of the concept discussions that I've had with the developer, and also guided by the village's existing zoning, so that we can maintain consistency or, or use that as, as guidance wherever possible. The, the standards in here would, I think some of the more important standards. It requires that the building be located close to North Maple Avenue. It does not permit vehicle access from that primary street. Instead, all access needs to be on the side streets of Franklin and Marshall. It also provides that, or requires that parking be located behind the building as well. And I think what that is going to do, in combination with many of the other site and architecture standards in the, in the ordinance, it means that it's going to create a nice streetscape along this area. I think it'll really be an upgrade for what, from what we have there now, which has vehicle access, as well as some, some paved areas. So, instead, we'll have lawn, pedestrian-friendly, street furnishings, and then a nice handsome building located just behind that. The building height is, is not dissimilar to what we see in the surrounding area. The maximum building height here in the S1 ordinance is 56 feet. The maximum building height in the existing zone district and across the street is just six feet shorter at 50 feet. But I will say that the apartment building across the street at the corner of Franklin and North Maple, sort of, so across the street, is five stories. And so, I can't tell you the number of feet that that building is, but I believe it's less than, excuse me, more than what the permitted building height would be. So, I think that the building that is permitted by this ordinance is going to be consistent and compatible with what we see in the surrounding area, and is certainly going to be an upgrade from what currently exists on the property. And I'm happy to go into as much detail as the, the council would like, but I didn't want to speak for too long without getting a sense as to what folks are interested in.
Questions?
That's all very good.
Yep. Just one thing I want to, want to add, and I think Beth brought it up partially, but with the fourth round, the village was required to file a declaratory judgment action by the end of February, I believe. And any interested party who wanted to challenge it, or develop in that, in any municipality in the state, would file as an intervenor in this law, in that declaratory judgment lawsuit. Kensington filed as an intervener, so they were challenging this legally originally, which really warranted us to speak with them and, and talk to, find out what they wanted, and led to some of the discussions that came out as a result of that, so.
Any comments?
I would just say that in negotiations with, with Kensington, they were very receptive to your criticisms, to my requests, and to our engineering...
Yep, building and zoning.
And our planners' request. Yeah, yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, I, I support what, what Pam said. We met with them, actually, many members of the council, Lorraine Reynolds met with them, and they pretty much agreed to everything we asked for, so that this is a, a building that fits in with the streetscape. And I have to say that a, an assisted living facility in Ridgewood is a, a use that is absolutely beneficial to this community. You know, I, I just think it's going to be a great addition, assuming that it all goes through.
Absolutely. Yeah. I think that this is a way to use affordable housing to achieve multiple goals in the village. We're able to bring a new housing type for a new population, for seniors, especially those in need of care, and we're also able to upgrade an existing area of the village and get some affordable housing credits. It seems to be a win-win.
So, Mayor, from a procedural standpoint, if the council's so inclined to introduce this ordinance at next week's meeting, and it's voted to be introduced, it would then be referred back to the planning board, which they would meet in July, I believe the date's July 15th?
Mm-hmm.
And then...
15th.
Right. And then they would be able to review and make any recommendations, and send back correspondence to the council before this is considered for final adoption at the August 13th meeting.
Everybody good?
Everything great.
Let's go. Beth, thank you so much.
She's not done.
One more thing.
Sorry. So, I'll call the council's attention to item E1. And again, we've, we've talked about a lot of this previously, but in light of the submission to DCA by Beth with regard to our fourth round affordable housing obligation and the review and approval of the Ridgewood Planning Board, we have this on this agenda, because you'll be asked next week at our public meeting to adopt a, an endorsement resolution endorsing the plan that's been submitted and the approval of the Ridgewood Planning Board. So, Beth, you want to speak to that?
Sure. So, that was a lot of what I wanted to point out, but the bottom line is, the planning board has done, I, I think, a lot of the hard work, admittedly, of adopting the housing element. And so, that was completed on the 23rd. Everything's been submitted to the program for their review, but one of the tasks that does need to be completed as a follow-up is, is this very resolution, and that's an endorsement. So, it's not necessarily a council adoption of a plan, but it's an endorsement of what the planning board has done, and also, as part of that, it authorizes submission to the court or to the program for, for what will hopefully result in a compliance certification, our stamp of approval for, for our affordable housing plan. So, this is an important step, and it is one of the, one of the final formal actions that needs to be taken this summer in order for our housing plan submission to be complete.
Questions?
So, so Beth, can you just review for the council the number that we were able to reduce the RDP? I know that there's been some attention paid, and I actually had an inquiry into my office about some of the surrounding towns, and what the number was from when we originally talked about this back in February, when we had to make that submission to the numbers that we, where we now stand here in, in July.
Yeah, that's a great question. So, Ridgewood has historically been a recipient of a vacant land adjustment, which means that historically, or at least since the late 1980s, we haven't had enough land to fully satisfy our obligations, so we continue to get these adjustments, which reflect the lack of vacant and developable land. And essentially, we're able to adjust our obligation down to reflect what land is available for development of affordable housing. And just for context, your first and second rounds, the obligation from 1987 through 1999, that is 229 units. Your third round was 664 units, and now your fourth round, which is the, the current round, is 427 affordable units. And so, clearly, there's not enough land, and so we've gone through the vacant land adjustment process. For your first, second, and third rounds, that number was adjusted, the 229 plus the 664 was adjusted down to just 55. And then, in this round, there was some additional development that needed to be, development opportunities that needed to be accounted for, and that 427 was adjusted down to four. And so, admittedly, I have to say, four. It's a little unfair to compare what Ridgewood did, going from, I guess, reducing our obligation by 423 to another municipality, but if you were going to make that comparison, we would be doing pretty well. You know, there are conditions very different compared to Ridgewood, to every other community in the state, but, but at the end of the day, Ridgewood has been very diligent about complying with its affordable housing obligation, and, and about doing development that makes sense. And really, I think that's part of the, very much part of the reason why we have such manageable adjusted affordable housing obligations.
So, Beth, just to be clear, we went from 427 to four?
Correct. There is, you know, and I, just, just for the record, just to be clear.
Sure.
So, we did adjust that down. We satisfied that obligation. There is something referred to as an unmet need. It's discussed throughout your plan. And so, the unmet need for your fourth round is that 423 unit difference. We don't need to satisfy that, and in fact, we don't in our housing plan, but we do have to create some mechanisms that contribute towards that obligation. We have, just because your RDP is brought down to four, it doesn't mean that we're truly done, and we can wash our hands of the rest of the obligation. We have to make efforts where we can. And in fact... And in fact, the Kensington ordinance, the S1 ordinance I just talked about, is one of those efforts where we found a developer that we could work with in order to create some affordable housing.
Yeah, no, I think it's great. Just to be clear for those at home, I mean, I think a big part of the reason that makes Ridgewood different from others, and not just that we've done a nice job, I think, staying on top of this, but we're a pretty well-developed community. There's no large tracts of land left in Ridgewood. We've been developed pretty much to the hilt. And, you know, you can't find 400 houses and so units anywhere in Ridgewood, just because, again, we've built almost everywhere we really realistically can. So, you know, I don't want to sort of thumb our nose at the state of New Jersey. There's just physically not enough land to really build the type of housing that maybe other less developed communities could potentially look at. And not that we're not passing the buck to them, but it's worth noting that we're a very developed senior community in that regard. But I do think this is great. You know, I support the Kensington project. Makes a lot of sense. It allows us to address that need, allows folks to age in place, helps our downtown in that it'll bring, you know, some folks who may want to have lunch, both people that are there, people are visiting there, very selfishly, and I don't mean to be flippant, they don't have kids that go to our schools. Most of the residents won't be driving, which is great. And I know, Paul, to some of your, you know, comments before, I know we had talked a little bit with them about staggering shifts, so that it wouldn't align with when school gets in and out, and they've been very, very receptive. So I think this is really well done, Beth. Really appreciate all of your work on this. And I read through the report, I also thought it was really well-written and well-articulated.
Thank you very much.
Anybody else?
I agree with everything he said.
Thank you.
Thank you, Beth.
Beth, we could not have gotten through this without your steady hand and guidance. Thank you so much.
My pleasure. And I'll be here on the 9th for any further questions.
So will we.
Thanks, Beth.
Thank you. Mayor, that concludes my portion of the agenda.
And with that, let's go back to public comment.
Good evening, Mayor. Councilboy, a loving Ridgewood resident. Just a comment about the manager's comments about solar. In 2018, when solar was put on this building, it was hailed as the greatest thing since sliced bread. Now we're finding out that because of, I believe it said, a conduit that collapsed, and some other issues, we're getting rid of solar. I don't understand why we can't fix a collapsed conduit. Why scrap the whole project just because something was broken? Why don't we fix what was broken and put the solar back on, rather than just scrapping the solar? If I remember correctly, it has solar down at the main firehouse, we have solar at the water pollution control plant, we have solar in other places, but we're going to give up solar on the roof of Village Hall because we can't fix a collapsed conduit and some wiring issues? I don't understand it. So maybe we can get an explanation of what that's all about. It sounds like somebody just didn't want to do this any longer, and came up with an easy excuse to get rid of it. With respect to the referendum about the open space, just want to remind everybody that I hope that people who are voting for this aren't thinking that all the funding is going to be used for athletic fields. There are other things that the Open Space Committee is responsible for. Getting land for historic preservation purposes, flood relief purposes, and buffer zones. So I hope that when information is going out from this council about what this money is going to be used for, it is not slanted that the money is going to be used to increase the number of athletic fields in the community, because there are other things that the money can and should be used for. Again, historic preservation, flood control, and buffer. With my last comment as respect to the SID, by the admission of the gentleman, and I'm sorry, I forgot his name, who was here at your last work session, who talked about the SID, there was no presentation offered. The public saw nothing on the screen about this process. I encourage you to have a presentation put together about this, because it is rather a confusing topic. It's a complex topic and rather confusing. For instance, one of the things I remember is that it's going to encompass the entire village. So I ask, a question I would have is, if I owned Wilkes Deli, or was the property owner of Wilkes Deli over on Glen, what services am I going to get that differ from the services that somebody in the Central Business District gets? None of that was explained during your little talk last week, because there was nothing on the screen to see. So I'm hoping that either when the ordinance is introduced, or during the public hearing of that ordinance, there is a presentation available that the public can see, so we can understand what this is all about. And I realize that taxpayers aren't funding it, but it is still our community, and we would like to know what's going on, as opposed to having something just shut down our mouth with no information at hand. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Boyd.
Cynthia O'Keefe, Ridgewood resident. See, now you're all looking. Let's just be clear. It doesn't bother me if you don't look at me when I'm speaking. What does bother me is that sometimes you're not listening, or you try to spin something that, like, is opposition to what I'm saying into a favorable way for the public. Like, with the EcoTurf comment, Siobhan, we know that for Shedler, we never, crumb rubber infill was never a consideration, but by you saying, oh, look at these two places that are putting turf in, and now we're talking about EcoTurf, again, it's BS. EcoTurf has not been studied. Pam did say that, and she actually said that when you met with the turf vendors, none of them would contractually guarantee the absence of PFAS, and the, I think there were six chemical compounds that are the most toxic, made up of PFAS and/or PFOS, and that they would not contractually guarantee. So what does that say to you? They're not willing to give you a contract and say, sorry, our product doesn't have chemicals. Anyone that says artificial turf is PFAS-free is full of baloney. They're not testing it parts per trillion, they're testing it parts per million. I've done a lot of research, and maybe they use an in-house testing company. Like, there was a gentleman here who said his product was PFAS-free, and I did my due diligence and research on it, and it's not true. He used an in-house company. So I just want you to be careful. If you do make a comment, I guarantee you, I'm going to listen to it, I'm going to research it, and I'm going to come back and tell you if it's incorrect, because that's one thing I'm not going to allow to happen here. Nobody's going to gaslight the public. Whether you believe in turf, or you don't believe in turf, nobody's going to gaslight people. It's unacceptable to treat people that way. You know, when you say, we're just, you know, we just don't disagree, we're not talking about pizza toppings. You know, the NJDEP has groundwater standards, and you're, I don't know how many, of all the, you're shaking your head, Keith. Of all the millions of dollars of turf projects that the NJDEP has granted through Green Acres, which may change at some point, first of all, not all of that money was spent on actual artificial turf. It's walking paths, it's other things, park amenities. I called Green Acres, so I know that's what they told me. But besides that, how many of these artificial turf fields were next to private wells? That's, I'd like, maybe you have data on that, I don't know. Or maybe I have to call Sean LaTorre myself, I don't know. Maybe he'll take my call, and maybe he won't. I'll, you know, try to get his phone number. I just think what you're doing is so irresponsible, it's grossly negligent. You're talking about cutting hundreds of trees down on a property, you're not using it in a sustainable way. You're going before the Historic Preservation, or Historic Sites Council three weeks from now, and, you know, it'll be very interesting to hear what you have to say. But just remember, residents have a lot to say, too. And I'm sure it'll be an interesting day. Thank you.
Thank you, Cynthia. Anybody else? Seeing no one, we're going to go to our hybrid access participants. Amy, you're up.
Just like Cynthia just said, Winograd-
Excuse me, Amy, I'm sorry, I didn't hear your last name. I know who you are, but the public may not.
Oh, my last name is McCambridge.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Winograd, you tried to reassure the public by saying Ridgewood-
Excuse me, Amy?
Yeah?
If you would refer to Ms. Winograd as Siobhan, Ms. Winograd, Councilmember Winograd, but not simply by her last name, I would personally appreciate it.
Oh, I'm sorry, I don't do, I don't do that. But if you personally appreciate it, I will. I'll do that just for you.
Thank you so much.
Mayor, you're welcome. Siobhan, or I don't even know how to say it right. You, okay, is my time starting over?
Yes.
Okay. You tried to reassure the public by saying Ridgewood doesn't use crumb rubber, and is looking into eco-friendly turf. And again, that's a, like, total smokescreen. There's no such thing as eco-friendly synthetic turf. It's a marketing scam engineered to make you feel good while you poison your own town. These fields still rely on toxic plastic blades, petroleum-based backings, PFAS-laced components, forever chemicals linked to cancer, hormone disruption, and immune dysfunction. You can fill it with coconut husk, or cork, or whatever natural gimmick is trending, but it's still layered over a plastic carpet that suffocates the ground beneath it, bakes it to 170, and treads into microplastics with every footstep. It's not innovation, that's eco arson and green disguise. And let's be honest, you're not looking into safer options, you're not researching it, you're actively erasing the living environment while trying to distract us with buzzwords and hollow promises. And then you double down and say, all the trainers and coaches understand the guidelines. I can tell you that they don't. There's no signage, there's no certified trainer. I was a trainer here for 18 years. I can tell you that every single group has played out beyond what those safety guidelines were, and none of the trainers know about it. So please don't lie to the public with that. You're not following protocols, you're pretending to, and pretending is how the kids get hurt. So I want to be clear to the parents, this council's not protecting your kids, they're gaslighting you. They're not being ego-conscious, they are being willfully complicit in greenwashing a public health crisis. They are not leading, they're selling out this village to turf manufacturers and calling it progress. This isn't a policy debate anymore, it's a question of ethics. You're paving over living land, our earth, unleashing heat and toxins into not just our kids, but our own bodies, and then having the audacity to pat yourselves on the back. You don't get to poison this earth and call it sustainable. You don't get to bury risk NPR spin. And lastly, I heard about the new beautiful whimsical mural proposed to showcase Ridgewood. Lots of butterflies, beautiful. Just a reminder, butterflies aren't just beautiful, they are essential. Their disappearance is a warning bell, they're bio-indicators, and when butterflies die, entire ecosystems begin to unravel. So if we're going to paint the truth, add a melting turf field, children playing on toxic fake fields, how about add some dead butterflies and dying trees with the roots sealed beneath plastic? Don't forget a stream of microplastic straining into the Ho-Ho Cusbro. Because if you're going to paint a picture of this village's values, make it honest. If you could do that for me, that would be great. Thanks.
Thank you, Amy. Anybody else? Seeing no one, I'm going to close public comment. And we will entertain a motion for adjournment.
Could I just say something? Because I just, I want to respond.
You know what, it's the end of the night.
Do you want to go, Evan, do you want to say something?
Mayor, if I may, before the councilwoman responds, I have a childcare issue that I mentioned to you-
Yes, you did.
-prior to the meeting, so I'm going to excuse myself at this juncture.
Yep, please go.
So, happy 4th of July, everyone.
Thank you very much.
Bye, Keith. See you, Keith.
And when I said please go, I wasn't like, anyway, never mind.
Did you want to say something, Evan, or no?
I was going to go at the end, but I'm happy to lead off, if you'd like.
You can go first, go for it.
Thanks so much. I mean, I just, I'm going to ask my fellow councilmembers not to take debate on this. I mean, I took some notes. We were irresponsible, grossly negligent, we were lying to the public. We do this all the time, and we get some really inflammatory statements from people whose position I trust, or position I respect, but sometimes whose motive, well, I'm sorry, I'll take that back, but whose way of addressing us, I do question. And then we get into an argument with them, and it's the same argument over and over and over again. We disagree, we're not listening. No, we are listening, we just disagree. There's really no new information. I mean, obviously, you all are for individuals. I'm going to hold off, I'm going to not really engage anymore when we're accused of languages like that, because when language like that is used against us, they're not inviting, or our friends are not inviting a meaningful and productive conversation. It's just throwing words at each other, and I'm not going to be a part of it. I'm always happy to engage in an intellectual discussion on this. Reasonable people, Cynthia, and I'm sorry to call you out on this, can disagree on this topic. Pam Perrin is one of the smartest people that I know. I have a tremendous amount of respect for my friend Pam. We disagree on this. I don't think that makes me grossly negligent or responsible, nor does it make her.
I echo Evan's comments, and forgive me, Pam, but we've discussed this so many times, you have never said to me that I am gaslighting, irresponsible, grossly negligent. We're having a discussion. Let's have the discussion. We have, we are ready to have the discussion at every meeting, and whether we engage or not, I think the character, let's talk about facts, the characterizations about other people's opinion. There is no one on this dais who disagrees with anyone in the public who would refer to them as grossly negligent, irresponsible, or gaslighting, even though we respectfully disagree, and we always disagree respectfully. So it is your choice, you may continue to use those characterizations. I'm not going to stop you, I'm not going to, but I'm going to suggest that you don't. Just my thoughts. Siobhan?
What a mess. What a shame. What a mess. The last public comment took aim at people who volunteer for our village, show up, and took it back to Shedler. And certainly, that's expression, but what a mess. We'd people leave their families, donate their time, and it somehow gets back to that. Also what a mess is the five of us struggle with, should we respond, should we provide information? I don't have the actual minutes in front of me, but two callers, one who lived out of district expressly expressed concern about crumb rubber. It's never been crumb rubber, it's never been crumb rubber. Somehow, statements about the meetings Pam and I had in private, that I was grateful for her coming, it's turned to this. We have never said we found a vendor who's PFOS-free. I wouldn't say that, nobody would say that. We've asked, we went to them together, we've met with multiple vendors at the request of the community. We're cutting down trees, many of which, over 100, are invasive. Many of the things that we are doing is at the direct request of the neighborhood, and the committee, and people who were governing the house at the time. That's what we're doing. There's history, there's facts, and somehow it turns into what we're doing. This council has discussed Shedler more in the two and a half years since Evan and I have been here than the entire time we've owned the project. Every plan, whether you like it or not, has been out in front. And now we're on the unfortunate problem that Evan, everybody wants to go home, but I feel that when things are said, and they're factually inaccurate, we have to respond. Nobody would put children, we run a recreation program, we govern a pool, we would not put kids on a hot turf. And if the organizations that we're partnered with don't get that message to their trainers, we need to know that. But they do. I'm on the emails, they know it. They don't want to do that. They're coaches, they want their kids to be safe. I just, it's just a mess when we end a meeting, and I feel really badly for the people downtown. Butterflies are beautiful, we love them, we love the art. Not every good effort and good work can go back to Shedler, and I feel very bad about that. But every single meeting, that's where we end up. All five of us don't know how to deal with it anymore, we're trying to provide information, and ultimately, every single week, it turns into people knowing about a conversation that Pam and I had, that Pam and I were the only ones there. We hear you, we feel the plan is great, we feel that it'll go forward, we're encumbered by the state, and the state will make a decision. And that's it. I don't think there's much left to say.
Anybody else?
I was just saying about the open art, and I think that with the googly eyes, that we should move them around town, so we just, they never actually go away.
And with that, we will entertain a motion for adjournment? Or do we need a, do we need a resolution to go into closed sessions?
Yes. Be resolved by the Village Council, the Village of Ridgewood, the Village Council meeting in closed session on July 2nd, 2025, at 7:30 PM, or soon thereafter. As a matter on the agenda can be reached in the said closed session, be held in the caucus room on the 4th floor of the Ridgewood Village Hall, 131 North Maple Avenue, Ridgewood, New Jersey. Be further resolved that the matters to be discussed in closed session are limited to negotiation matters. To include Warner Theater, these matters are allowable under NJAS 10, call in 4-12 at Sec. And be further resolved that the minutes in this meeting shall be made available to the general public. One such matter has been deemed completed by resolution of the Village Council. May I have a motion? So moved.
Second.
All in favor? Anyone opposed? Thanks.
Thank you.
[inaudible]
I did tell. Are we still on?
You guys have any?
Yeah.